Good afternoon, everyone. This is Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point. Happy to convene a special meeting of the High Point City Council. Here in the room, we have council members Peters, Harmon, Andrew, Cook, McKeever, and Mayor Pro Tim Moore. We expect that our other council members will join us shortly, as soon as they can. At this time, we'll go ahead and ask if there is a motion to adopt our agenda.
So, moving.
Motion's been made by Councilman Andrew and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Moore. Any discussion on that motion to adopt our agenda? Are you none, all those in favor, if it's in the file, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any against?
The ayes have it, and our agenda is adopted.
First item, item twenty twenty-five dash three zero seven. And for this, we'll ask Ms. Nina Wilson, our Director of Community Development and Housing, to come forward. This would be a presentation on the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine five-year consolidated plan and twenty twenty-five annual action plan. Ms. Wilson, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We appreciate you all letting us present this information to you this afternoon. Again, it is our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine consolidated plan and our twenty twenty-five annual action plan. And just as a recap, I know that I've presented some of this information to you all several times over the past few months, but High Point is what's considered a HUD entitlement community, which means that we receive community development, black grant, or CDVG funds on an annual basis to assist low and moderate income families and households. Now, these are funds that we don't necessarily have to compete for, but they are based on a formula allocation. So, there are certain factors within the community that affect how much funding we receive. And we can, of course, undertake acquisitions, activities such as acquisition, public services, public improvements, as well as any type of economic development activities. Again, all to serve low and moderate income areas. Okay, and we also are a home participating jurisdiction, or a PJ. And again, this is an allocation that we receive. We don't have to compete for this, but the home funds are specifically for housing activities. And it is to provide decent and safe sanitary housing for low-income households. That can be rental housing, it can be for homeownership, and it is to also work with our nonprofit agencies that build or construct or provide affordable housing and to help them build capacity. And it is also to leverage private sector participation. So, the consolidated plan, that is our five-year plan. And what this basically is, when we talk about our strategic planning process, we undertake activities such as the housing needs assessment. We look at factors that affect fair housing. We also look at our homeless needs assessment. So, there are a lot of different things that we look at as far as census data and a lot of research to determine, okay, what are the needs in our community and how do we want to deploy these funds within our community so that they have the greatest impact? And so, within the five-year plan, we identify our goals and our objectives to meet those priority needs. And then, on an annual basis, we develop our annual action plan. And then, that is basically taking from the five-year plan, outlining what we're actually going to do each year during that five-year period. And as far as the citizen participation process, this is a process that goes on over several months. It's not a specific group, but it is community-wide. And so, we have undertaken stakeholder meetings. We did have a consultant, Urban Design Ventures, out of Pennsylvania. They are the consultants that we're working with for this plan. They also prepared our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four plan. So, we did have some experience working with them in the past. So, they conducted stakeholder meetings, and these were sometimes one-on-one interviews, but they also included group interviews. And these stakeholders included everyone from housing providers, healthcare providers, that'd be mental health. There were homeless service providers, I apologize, homeless service providers. So, just an array of, you know, individuals and groups that actually have an interest and a stake within the community, as well as a resident survey that was made available through the links there. That was actually made available for about thirty to forty-five days for individuals to complete. And we had two citizen participation public meetings. Both of those were at Parks and Recreation, and those were on May twentieth and June twenty-sixth. So, we're not developing these plans in a bubble. We are trying to get citizen feedback. We met with several staff members in various departments. So, we are trying to get feedback just to make sure that we are addressing the most urgent needs or the highest priority needs. When we look at the history of funding over the past five years, as you can see, it's kind of trended down, but not drastically. But we are looking at some trends sort of going down. Right after the pandemic, there were a little, there were some increases there, maybe a little steady. But when we're looking at CDVG, it's going down and our home funding is going down. And you may be aware that, as of right now, there is no home funding in the administration's proposed budget at this point for twenty twenty-six. For twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six anticipated funding, the allocations were actually released May thirteenth. Typically, our plans are due to HUD no later than May fifteenth. However, because the allocations did come out late, they did allow extensions. And because we had so many plans or various plans that were going, that were going on, we had completed the twenty forty-five comp plan, we were working on the housing study. So, we wanted to make sure that we had the most current and relevant data to inform the plan that we were developing. And so, we do have until August the sixteenth, which is the absolute statutory deadline, to have this plan completed. Our allocation for CDVG is eight hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and for home, it's four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seventy-four dollars. We do provide a cash match, or the city does provide a cash match. And what we do with that particular, with those funds, is we actually do other home-eligible activities. It may be something which could be an acquisition, but it may not necessarily be something that we specifically identified in the plan. Or it could be, just so happens, maybe if I get a rehab or something that we feel like we can address it with home funds, then we would do that. So, we do use those funds for other home-eligible activities. And then, we have some programming coming from both, from like down payment assistance loans or home repair loans where people are still making payments, and from our tax credit projects. They do make payments on those. We're receiving from North Carolina Housing Finance. And I'm sorry, that should say twenty twenty-six. I'm sorry, I did not catch that. The urgent repair program is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then, the construction training program will receive seventy thousand from them, as well as a seventy thousand dollar cash match that we're providing. And from the IRS, we'll receive four hundred and fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the volunteer income tax program, or VIDA. And then, from the City General Fund, two point three million. And that includes the local codes, administration of our department, that includes local codes. The draft priorities are in no particular order. However, based on the feedback and the numbers that we have seen so far, these are the priority areas, housing being one of them. We know that there's a housing shortage, a housing crisis. So, the areas that we want to look at include housing development, housing rehab, homeownership, rural assistance, as well as housing support services. For the homeless priority, looking at housing opportunities for homeless, whether that be permanent supportive housing, or even in some cases, maybe shelter or transitional, just anything that has to do with housing those folks that are unhoused. Looking at support and management services for agencies that undertake these activities, homeless prevention activities, support of the continuum of care, and, as I said, permanent supportive housing. Special needs population is a target population that we are seeing grow, that is growing within our community. And looking at opportunities there include housing, accessibility and modifications to housing units, and also social and support services. And for the community development priority, looking at our public services activities, which that does include things such as healthcare services, working with our youth, working with our seniors such as Wheels on Wheels. Also, clearance and demolition activities, as well as neighborhood revitalization. So, all of those things are encompassed under the community development priority. And then, planning administration is basically making sure that we are good stewards of the federal dollars. The proposed use of funds for next year, we're looking at primarily, in the CDVG area, we're looking at housing activities and public services. When we look at our priorities, the goals that we have developed, using those funds to address those two primary needs. Looking at some of our community development needs, which falls under public services, housing, homelessness, that's the area that we would be looking at. But we're looking at our public service grants, urgent repair. And for the affordable rental housing programs, we have used the Section one oh eight loan guarantee program, and we do have to pay those funds back. So, a small portion of our CDVG funds are set aside for that, for that debt service. And for the home funds, we are required to allocate a minimum of fifteen percent of our home funds for nonprofit housing developers. So, those are community housing development organizations, Chodos. So, that's like Habitat, Community Housing Solutions, and Blackland Development Corporation. So, we do have to set aside funding for those activities. And then, of course, we have our home higher education, down payment assistance, as well as program administration. The public review and comment period is July second through August the first. We will be looking to come before you on August fourth for a public hearing. And then, as I said, the plan is due by August sixteenth to HUD. And if I could, before, maybe before questions, just to say that the plan is not indicative of, I don't think, the equality that I would have liked to have seen our draft plan go out. So, I do want to apologize for that. There were time constraints, unfortunately, on the consultant's side, and I was not able to review it and preview it before it actually went out. So, I do want to first apologize for that. And there are just a couple of things that I want to point out. So, any typos as far as location, they've been made aware of all of these things. And there are some things that were a little more glaring, some that were not. I'll point out one, which is specifically that we are a fair housing assistance program now. When they did our plan last time, we were not. So, I think some of that information may have carried forward without a little bit more research. So, we've brought these things to their attention. They will be corrected, and we will be giving you all another draft before the public hearing.
Thank you, Nina. And you mentioned August sixteenth being the deadline for plan completion. That means deadline for us to approve it too, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, awesome. Let's open it up. Any questions on this item?
Yeah, Nina, you mentioned that there is some funds set aside for nonprofit developers, housing developers. Is there a certain percentage set aside, fifteen?
Yes, yes. We typically set aside more because fifteen percent of four hundred thousand is a very small number. So, we typically do more than the fifteen. The fifteen is a minimum.
Where would you say we go on that? What percentage do we normally do on that?
Probably about anywhere between seventy-five and eight percent because we are primarily using our home funds for single-family construction, yes. That's where we're putting our money, as well as some of the rental, but not as much.
Yeah, no, Nina, thank you for that. I'm gonna tag in on your question with Councilman Holmes. I was just thinking, you know, we do a really good job, and I was on CAC along with Michael and Tim, and I don't know if anyone else was on CAC. Unfortunately, y'all weren't lucky enough to be there. But we used to have a lot of conversations about how the city finds a way to really leverage a myriad of tools, devices, and funding sources to produce a whole lot. I'm wondering, do you and your team have something we could look at that sort of shows how this, like, what I would call like a braided funding model, how that then produces the ROI that it's been producing? Because I think, I think, I mean, what you showed there in terms of numbers is awesome, but there's a way in my mind that I'd love to see where there's federal funding and then city general funds funding that we're leveraging that's producing how much in terms of nonprofit and private investment and tax value back to the city? I think, I think there's something to be said there about, one, the awesome job that you all do to best leverage what we do get. And then, two, you just said it, home funds going away. Folks should probably understand that when you say home funds going away, you're not saying home. I mean, that, that really ain't what it is. That's what means to an end. The end is some of the new homes that we've seen down on South Side, East Side, and other places where investment historically doesn't go. This funding that we've been leveraging for that, that's going away. So, if you've driven down south through South Side, or you've gone over by the railroads near Haskins Street, Seaford, Ward One, Ward Three, Ward Two, places where investment generally doesn't go, where I know my neighbors say we want to see more investment, and they're grateful to see that investment. I think there's a point that's being said, and I love the way you sort of manicured it about the president's potential budget. To be clear, we have a housing crisis in this country, and right now, funding's being cut to address the housing crisis, basically, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I love to see how we're leveraging that braided funding model to produce so many units already. Because if anything, that may mean as local government, there's some conversations we have in next year's budget to figure out how we can at least take care of High Point if DC won't help us take care of it. So, I think, I think your point there is a really good one. Thank you for that. And any other questions or comments from council?
Well, I have some concerns about the fact there's no rental assistance in there. That's one of the goals, but it has zero dollars for it. It's kind of a meagre goal. Prevent homelessness, right? Let's keep people housed. So, for some particular reason, rental assistance is not part of the plan?
It is, and it is a goal. It is part of one of our goals, and it does fall under public services. I just don't think that we actually, we did not specifically identify new funding out of this five-year plan for rental assistance. We do have home ARC dollars. And so, as I've discussed with the managers, we do have funds available for that, for the rental assistance, for eviction prevention, for emergency hotel assistance. Those are all things that fall under supportive services that we can do with the home ARC funds. And that has been our plan. Council approved our home ARC implementation plan in twenty twenty-three, March of twenty twenty-three. And so, new construction rental housing was part of that plan, as well as supportive services. And that was to address folks that, I guess what you would say, are the most vulnerable in our community. So, we're talking about those that are fifty percent below AMI, as well as homeless, those folks that are homeless. And so, we are looking at doing that. We would do that through a request for applications. And so, that is something I do believe that we are at the point that we will get ready to start looking at that, maybe in the next several, several weeks. Again, I think my focus has really kind of been a lot on the study, getting our data, making sure that what we put out there, that it is going to be used, you know, to its highest and best use.
How much is, how much funding, how much is available?
Under public services, under the support services, we have about two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for support services.
I do believe last year, we set aside fifty thousand dollars that was going towards rental assistance. And we were primarily working with one agency to help with rental assistance. It could also help with hotel payments. It could help with deposits for people that were going into units. So, our guidelines were a little bit broader than just rental assistance that the agency could use the funds for. And when I was going back and looking at some of the agency allocations that were pointed through the nonprofit agency process, there was at least one other agency that was listed there that had about fifteen thousand dollars that's supposed to be used for rental assistance as well. And that was C three, as clients work through their process. And then, there may be some other nonprofit agencies that the director and I were talking about earlier today. One in particular is Macedonia. They set aside funds in their budget to also be used for rental assistance. So, there are some other agencies in the community that are offering that. But in addition to those, there was the initial fifty thousand that was set aside. And then, we do have some other funds that we can allocate through an RFP process for rental assistance, although it's not included in this process.
This is their prior year funds, and I did sort of just do a follow-up inquiry on that. And I know of at least six other agencies that have received funding for, specifically for rent and utility assistance. And some of those were done through United Way. You have private foundations that are now providing some funds because of the need. And one of the reasons I believe that we are kind of focusing on housing, in a sense, is because there really aren't any other agencies out here doing affordable housing. And I know we have private developers in the community that are building houses, that are doing in-field, but when we talk affordability, that's not their market. They're really not looking at affordable housing, and there's not another model out there like Habitat.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Nina, I've got a couple. In terms of, and you kind of started to allude to this, adjusting some of the responses now. But we'd love to see how we did in terms of meeting objectives and goals from the previous plan from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. We'd love to just see a side-by-side comparison in terms of, these were our priorities, and sort of, here's where we landed on those priorities in terms of achieving that. Also, just I know that we had a pandemic in the midst of all that too. So, I think we're sensitive to any disruptions, but just want to be able to see it for fidelity's sake. And then, in terms of the housing fund, I know this government chose to award two million dollars to that bigger fund. I imagine that, based on your five priorities, that the work of the housing fund does align with at least one or two of those priorities. Would you say that?
Absolutely. The housing priority, for sure, because the housing fund was established for affordable rental housing specifically. So, it certainly would meet that criteria.
Yeah, I think this housing piece has been something that's been so, so wonderfully done, I think, by the team, and Nina, to you and your entire department. Let them know how much we appreciate them. And when we saw the report, we knew it wasn't indicative of how hard your team works. Just tell us the name of the consultant, and we'll never work with them again. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yeah, don't record that.
They're good people, but every now and again, things happen, and that's life, unfortunately.
No, no, I get it. Coming from a consultant myself, I get it. If there's nothing else, Nina, we'll tell you. Thank you. Appreciate this.
Thank you, Nina.
We'll look at this again. Madam manager, when, where will we do this again?
So, the next time the council will review this is when it comes for our public hearing, which will be August fourth. And we would need to have it approved on that night so that staff can finalize it and get it in by August sixteenth. Our next council meeting is not until August eighteenth, which is after the due date.
Sixteenth is the.
So, it will come back to council on August fourth.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, real quick question, Nina. The citizen participation, when you do your outreach and stuff, how's the response?
It is, it has actually been pretty good this year. Most of our meetings, and I know some people are saying, okay, this is a city of such and such size. But if we're able to get at least twenty-five or thirty people at a meeting, that to us is a success. And on the surveys, we've been able to get back roughly around, I think, sixty surveys. And we work with our marketing team to get things pushed out through our social media platforms, and our webpage, and things like that.
It's not a large sample you're drawing from versus critically important information, though.
I would say not a huge sample, no. I would not say that.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Next item, item twenty twenty-five dash three zero six. And we'll ask Mr. Peter Bishop, our African Development Director. This is a presentation regarding the targeted investment areas incentive policy. Peter, how are you doing today?
I'm doing excellent. I hope you are as well, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Very good. This may be kicked off. So, thank you very much for that, Mr. Mayor. So, we're going to talk about the city's targeted investment areas incentive policy. I'll provide some history and a review of this program, and certainly answer any questions that council may have about it going forward. So, before I get into some of these details here, this program, some form of downtown incentive program has been happening in High Point since about twenty fifteen. At that time, the amounts were a little bit lower. The area of impact was much smaller. In twenty fifteen, council approved business development grants and rehabilitation grants of twenty thousand dollars and business building demolition grants of ten thousand dollars. And then, a few years later, a previous council and administration was moving forward with the stadium project in the Catalyst District. And you wanted to, the thought of the council at that time was to try and create a stronger set of programs to take advantage of that investment and attract more business and more customer base around that new stadium project. So, in twenty twenty, council approved a different program that added in a rental reimbursement program for businesses, as well as job creation incentives, in addition to a building renovation incentive. So, you sort of had three incentives stacked into one policy that was focused on the downtown area. And that leads us to the more recent revisions in both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, when the rental reimbursement rates were significantly reduced. So, the city started very generous in the beginning with eighty, sixty, I think forty, and twenty percent over four years of rental reimbursement. And then, gradually went over the years down to where the last policy ended, which was thirty to where the last policy ended, which was 35%, 25%, 15%, and 5% over the different four years. And that's just the rental reimbursement part of the policy. And that brings us to today. As of June 30th, the targeted investment areas incentive policy has expired. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that policy here today. So the purpose of the policy was, of course, to increase employment opportunities, increase the tax base, continue the redevelopment around the downtown area, and then in 2023, the West Green Drive area was also added as a targeted area to this policy. The policy applies to job creation and taxable investments for office, for retail, for entertainment purposes, restaurants, et cetera. So again, working to attract mixed-use businesses and companies to the downtown and Green Drive areas to support the redevelopment in those areas. I will show you some maps on the next slide coming up here. The project specifically looked at eligibility for real and personal property improvements that increased the assessed value by the Guilford County Tax Assessor by at least 25%. Projects that would be eligible for this policy needed to create at least 10 jobs and pay the employees of those 10 jobs at least 60% of the Guilford County average annual salary, as determined by the Department of Commerce. Today, that number is $60,195, so 60% of that number. And then, these must be competitive and necessary incentives. Of course, all incentives within North Carolina must be competitive and necessary. So we require companies that are applying to this, who are we competing for, and show us, prove through your narrative the necessity why, you know, but for, I would not do this project but for receiving this grant fund or this incentive. Here are the targeted areas for this policy. I think it's important to note that these are not necessarily municipal service districts as established by council. These areas are specific to this policy. They look similar to some municipal service districts, but the downtown investment area specifically grew over the years to include more spots to the west, as the English Drive and Lindsay Drive areas just west of the stadium, and into the industrial areas down English Drive, or English Street expanded and provided opportunities to be included in this policy. And how grant awards are calculated? Well, I think it's first important to say, at no time would staff propose to council an incentive award that does not pay itself back over at maximum a seven-year period of time. The period of time listed in the application was three to seven years. Statute provides up to 10 years to pay back these investments, but council was very specific. They said, we want these grant awards to be paid back within three to seven years. So staff would look, would establish the market rent for the area in which a project was looking to apply, and then we would calculate the rental reimbursement separately. And then we would also look at the job creation that was being proposed, and the building renovations, and the additional capital investment that was going to come with the project, and what that revenue stream looks like. And then we would compare that revenue stream over years with a discount factor and compare it to the actual revenue stream that we would be receiving in tax receipts. And that's just real and personal property tax receipts. We're not getting into sales tax or some of those other more obscure taxes that can be a little bit hard to calculate at the front end of the project, but yet you can certainly look, you know, through the backend and see how those things work. And then grants are provided upon confirmation of each project meeting those benchmarks. So it's important to note that incentives are not provided to companies upfront. These are always performance grants that are achieved upon completion of those benchmarks. So every year, our staff will review requests that come from one of these companies, or really all of our industrial incentives as well, and make sure, did you create the jobs you were said you were going to create? Can you show me voided checks and invoices for all the capital investment that you've done? And then we work with the Guilford County Tax Assessor's Office to look at the taxable property that's on there and make sure that we're receiving the revenue that was promised through the initial contract. Of course, for a legal and procedural matter, contracts with clawbacks are required for each of these awards in the targeted investment areas incentive policy. We set specific benchmarks and work closely with the companies to ensure that those are realistic benchmarks, and that they are achievable and represent the activities that the projects will be doing. All projects, of course, are approved by city council with a properly noticed public hearing. So 15 to 20 days beforehand, or whenever we receive the go-ahead from city council to move forward with a project that you would like to hear, we will publish in the High Point Enterprise a language that is very statutory required and specific about the project, about where they're coming, what address they're coming to, what grant is going to be proposed, and the address of the property in which the activity is going to take place. Since that 2023 update to the policy, or actually not since 2023, since the 2020 update to the policy, not the old 2015 one, there have been seven projects that have located in the downtown area specifically. They are Rudd Fleet, Dive Bar, Key Risk, I-Cole, Colwell Banker Advantage, iHeart Radio, and Nomad Wine Works. Four of those businesses, of course, are in the Bedrock Building and our office spaces above the food hall that's there. And then the other two, Rudd Fleet is separate, Dive Bar and Nomad, of course, are bar and restaurant concepts. All of these businesses are still in operation, are for all intents and purposes successful. They are all, of course, very grateful to have received the support of the city of High Point. And here are some of the numbers behind these seven projects. So all told, the city provided 2.4 million of grants to these seven businesses. Since that 2020 period in time, 231 full-time jobs have been created through this program. And the total capital investment, now this is the pledged investment that these companies listed, in many cases, we know that they invested more than that's listed here, but this is what was contractually put together with them, $5.1 million of total investment. So that's about a two-to-one more, greater than two-to-one return on the city's incentive program for that investment. And then a couple other numbers that we have. Some council members may recall that in 2023, consultant Sanford Holshouser did an economic impact analysis of this policy when it was up for renewal for city council. And the model provided by that economic impact analysis showed that in just one year, those projects created a $17 million direct, indirect, and induced impact combined for the city of High Point. The total fiscal direct impact, and that's the generation of property taxes, sales taxes, excise taxes, and all the tax revenue that these companies generate in one year was just over a million dollars. So there's a significant impact to the approval of these projects. Yes, sir.
And what was our, I can't remember that study, but what was our input to make that happen? What was our investment that led to that?
Our investment was 2.4.
So 2.4 million led to that right there?
Where's my previous slide?
Yeah, and then the five.
There.
For the total.
So yeah, the total grand dollars issued by the city of High Point was 2.42 million. The total capital investment leveraged was 5.1 million, and the combined impact of those together was 18.17 million. And that's just one year.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation on the targeted investment areas incentive policy. I'll certainly take any questions that I can answer from the mayor and council.
Any questions from council?
Yes. Peter, you may have said it in the beginning. Was there an analysis done of the competitiveness of our incentive policies versus our sister cities or surrounding areas as we look at updating our incentives?
So there wasn't maybe a comparison necessarily on the effectiveness of that policy, but we did look at what other communities offer in their downtown areas. And there's sort of two different subsets of downtowns. So you have your smaller sort of NC Main Street and US Main Street programs, and those tend to be smaller awards, very much focused on facades, on building upfits, on signage, on marketing. And then you have larger cities that tend to do larger capital grants, and those are typically similar to our building outfit grant, cash grants that happen when you make a significant property investment. Some of them had special events, so they would support special events or one-offs that would happen in some downtowns. And then others were for streetscape and facade cleanup, so, you know, making, doing top paint on bricks, putting on a new awning, cleaning up or power washing different areas of the front facade of a building. One unique thing, and I mentioned this to the mayor in advance of his interview with Fox 8, no other community from my research offered rental reimbursement in any form. So that was something that was unique to the city of High Point's policy.
Another question. Are there any current applications in for any area of the West Green District?
There is one application that's been received for the West Green, and that was received before the expiration date. And then there was an additional project that submitted for the downtown area before the expiration date. So there are two pending applications.
Okay, and the expiration date was when again?
June 30th of this year, so about 15, 20 days ago.
Okay, and then what do we need to do to, if we want to extend or reestablish it?
If council goes to continue the project, to continue the program, you could just extend it for another year. It did sunset June 30th, which is why we're providing the update, because we were asked to provide an update once the program concluded.
So it's now on the agenda at this point?
It's on the agenda for action, yes, sir.
Can we, I guess, suspend rules and add it to the agenda for tonight?
You would like to?
To extend? Well, or do you prefer we have some kind of a hearing on it? I mean, if it's just an extension, not a new policy?
Yeah, I'm just trying to scroll through my head and make sure that you feel, so there's, yeah, there's no public notice required for it because it's just the policy, versus obviously we have advanced public notice in the public hearing for individual grants of it, projects for it. So if you wished, you could do it at the outset of the meeting before adopting the agenda, if you wanted to at that time just go ahead and add it, and then you would adopt the agenda as amended. If you feel comfortable just approving the exact policy as it existed before sunset, with no changes or anything, then that would be, I think that would be fine.
Do we want any time to have discussion on any?
Yeah, no, I was just asking just to see.
Yeah, I get it, but if we move forward with that, I'm not saying that's the wrong or right thing to do. I'm just saying, do we look at making changes or additions or additions to the current policy?
Yeah, if you've got thoughts, you can feel free to share with the team and maybe see what thoughts can percolate.
I don't know that I have anything specific right now, but what I'm saying is if we extend it for another year, I guess we could come back at any time and make amendments to it, is that?
Okay. Well, the reason why I would like to extend it is I feel like there's still a lot of growth potential, and I think we're not quite there yet. And also, especially since we have these delays in rezoning the Southwest Mill District, hopefully we can get that done within the next month or two. I think that those areas would really be able to benefit, because hopefully we'll see growth in that area. So that's why I would really like to extend it.
Any other thoughts or questions from council right there? At this time, we'll ask if there is a motion to go into closed session for item 2025-282. So motions been made by Councilmember Holmes, second by Councilmember Johnson. Those are fairly certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Yeah, it's a, we will go into closed session. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn, is the one. So motions been made by Councilmember Holmes, the second given to Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn, this is a special meeting. All those fairly certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Yeah, it's a, we are adjourned.